Good evening and welcome to the Coeur d'Alene City Council meeting for August 2024. I will call this meeting to order and the clerk will note that all council are present. Tonight, we have Chase Fuheart of Trinity Church. If you want to come forward and provide our invocation, we'd very much appreciate it. Welcome, sir.
Please pray with me. Almighty and everlasting Father, by whose hand the heavens and the earth were made, whose power upholds and sustains all things and whose wisdom has designed all of it, we bless you for your unbounded goodness. Gracious God, we bless you for the good land that you have given to us, and we pray for our own people, for our nation, the United States of America, for our state, the great state of Idaho, and for our city, the city of Coeur d'Alene. Make us a commonwealth of peace and of justice. Make clear to us your will for our lives and enable us by your Holy Spirit to be a people faithful to it. Grant wisdom to this, our city council, and to our mayor, that these men and women would serve this community diligently, faithfully, righteously, and humbly in the fear of you. God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, we bless you for your Son, the Savior of the world, for it is through him and in him and following him that this land and this city may be blessed. So we bring our petitions before you in his name. Amen.
Thank you. Dan, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I went to a parochial grade school with nuns, and we said the pledge every morning. And to this day, many, many years later, we finished that pledge, and I want to say, "Good morning, sister." Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move to table item F2B, which is the nomination for the appointment of council member seat four effective September 1st.
I'm going to second that for discussion.
And this would be table to September 3rd. Oh, and the reason, Mr. Mayor, is that, well, first of all, there's a couple of reasons. Number one is that the statute cited in the, on the agenda is actually the statute for appointing a vacancy in the office of mayor. The statute that appoints a vacancy for council is 5704. And also, there's no vacancy. We just took the, we just took the role and all council are counted and present for. So there is no vacancy, which I believe could lead to a problem should future Mayor McEvers decide to change his mind, and we made an appointment tonight, then what would we do? And to be safe and to avoid that potential of that happening, we should table the item until he's sworn in. I also have here the white paper that was prepared by our city attorney, and it does mention that there is no specific definition of the word vacancy in statutes. It says, uses the word vacancy in a lot of code, and in it, he cited, this is in Idaho Code 59901, where it said resignation would be submitted in writing to the body and then approved by the board. And we don't have any such resignation submitted or approved, and therefore, I don't think there is a vacancy, and it would be best to fill that vacancy at our September 3rd meeting. And that was the reason for my motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for Randy to comment on Dan's thoughts.
It was my opinion, it still is my opinion, that a vacancy occurs upon resignation, even if that resignation is effective at some date in the future. That was the way it was handled in terms of a couple of Supreme Court justices, as I pointed out in the white paper. And given that that's how it is, has been interpreted in practice, I think that is a legitimate interpretation of the word vacancy.
Mr. Mayor, and that does apply to--
Just a minute. I'm sorry. There was somebody else wanting--
Oh, well, I just wanted to, I mean, if we pass that and went to that meeting, I mean, and we've kind of bounced around on this, but at least, you know, some of us been on the record of saying, you know, we want to have a process for it and post it and put it out so it's official, people can, you know, submit names. Is that part of this, or?
No, this is just a table.
Oh, just a table. Okay.
He was asked out the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so to respond to council member English's question, this is just a table, and then the decision about the format of how it, it would still be up to the future mayor, which is in the code. And the other thing I'd like to bring to the attention of council is that, that what you cited regarding filling a vacancy that has not actually taken place is, is for power of the governor to appoint a justice. And I do assume, based on your white paper, that that would have been resignation submitted in writing, and therefore, you know, that was the intention, it's a legal document. But I'd like to draw your attention to a court case that was filed here in 2011, is CV 2011 5388, which was Hamilton and Seymour versus the Board of Trustees of the Coeur d'Alene School District 271, which received a summary judgment from Judge Simpson. And in the, and I know this applies to code to Title 33, even though we're operating under Title 50, but it concerns the word vacancy. If a person who's going to resign were still on the board, then there would be no vacancy that could be filled. If three of the five members of the board resigned at the same time, of course, how that process would work. But in this case, Ms. McLaughlin Eady Brooks presided over the interviews of potential candidates and voted for the appointment of her successor while she was still on the board. There was no actual vacancy at the time of the appointment of her successor. The appointment at the special meeting of the Board of Trustees did not comply with the statute. And I know, again, this is Title 33, we're under Title 50, but I believe it pertains to the word vacancy. And again, I'm going to insist that at present, there is no vacancy on this council. I would feel better if there was a letter of resignation that had been written and submitted to council, because that would be a kind of a legal document. But we will put ourselves in a predicament that if this situation changes, and there's nothing to prevent it from changing, that we would have seven council members, and that would be a pickle I don't want to be in.
Did you have something to share?
Mr. Gookin is correct that that is under Title 33. The language of that statute, 33504, is somewhat different than the statutes involving the mayor, replacement of the mayor, and the replacement of a council member, in which case, in the school district situation, the Board of Trustees declares a vacancy, which is quite different than what's going on here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just my personal experience, Randy, myself and Ken Howard, when we resigned from the NIC Board, Ken is a brilliant lawyer, and he did his research on that, and we were required to submit a resignation letter to the chairman of the board, and that had to be accepted by the board. But we did have to do a letter documenting it, and it had to be accepted. And I'm sure there's, the cities are not operating under the same statutes, but listening to Councilman Gookin talk about a court case that was in our own backyard makes me a little bit hesitant to agree that there is a vacancy. And I also had a question about the Supreme Court justices. They're not elected, correct?
No, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
Well, just, you know, kind of my bottom line on this, and realizing it's just to table it, my thought kind of the whole way has been, you know, we're not in a rush, so to table it till then and then, you know, take some action and do whatever, then, you know, I'll support the motion to table.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Will the clerk take the roll, please?
Evans?
No.
Miller?
No.
McEvers?
No.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Can I vote?
Yes, you can vote on this procedural--
The mayor votes nay. We'll move--
The city clerk just informed me that a written letter of resignation was submitted to her.
Why was council not given a copy of this letter?
I have no idea. I was not present.
Seems a little sloppy.
Pardon? Okay, so we'll move on unless there are other amendments to the agenda. We'll move on to public comment. Jeanette Luster?
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, and community. Tonight, I'm going to take off my normal hat and set it aside and speak to you as a Recreation and Safety Aquatics auditor. I think many of you are aware of my long history in recreation and aquatics, public aquatic supervision. I have attended many state aquatics management schools and hold a national camp certification that allows me to audit aquatics instructors that host waterfronts in the region and operate five different types of non-motorized watercraft, two motorized boating crafts, swimming, snorkeling, scuba, and lifesaving. I'd like to speak tonight on the decision to explore recreation vendors for the Atlas Waterfront area. I first want to make it clear that I am not opposed to this suggestion at all. However, I do have some concerns and thoughts I'd like to bring attention to. First, that stretch of that area directly in front of the swim spaces approximately 400 feet from shore to boom logs. There is two-way traffic and sometimes middle traffic, which really leaves 200 to 250 feet, because that's 100 foot for the river and 150 foot if you're towing. So I was there an hour and a half today, and not a single watercraft honored that no-wake rule except for one person in that hour and a half. One jet skier came within 15 feet of the kids lounging on the boom logs, disrupting their relaxing, and then toppling them off the logs, which they thought was hilarious. There are several spots on this stretch which narrows just before, just before that aero, causing kind of a bottleneck, and it narrows to 321 feet. It's in this spot just west of the swim area that has a natural log wall and an inlet that could be more ideal and protected for safer beginning paddle boarding and kayaking. There is some logging debris removal that would need to occur, however, because of the natural protection this offers, more adequate safety for those who are beginning watercrafting. I also want to speak about the current. One of the first things we teach in any watercraft operator is to tip over or sink their watercraft and reestablish getting back on. Most paddleboards are about 10 to 12 feet tall and 30 inches wide. My arms are 22 inches long. Now add a person smaller than me inexperienced in a steady current with a wake from potential boaters. This, in my opinion, is a drowning waiting to happen. I was literally in my flip flops and this dress, ready to go in after that person that was going towards the log today. Many lifeguards train extensively to be able to manage swift water rescue. Before they close the dam down, that water is moving at 400 cubic feet per second. I am a volunteer search and rescue member, and I spoke with Sergeant Ryan Miller, who operates the SAR in the Marine Division, and he reminded me that the property on the south side is for sale for $29 million and is yet to be developed. So our no-wake law begins at the furthest out dock point or pillar and measures from that area across to the next dock area. So as development happens, our boat traffic area will decrease in width and possibly move closer to that north shoreline. Sorry, just by adding non-motorized watercraft, all boats must honor the 50-foot no-wake from that craft. So my point is, you will have motorized and non-motorized traffic colliding in an unmarked no-wake zone. So it's my hope in that in the future that we investigate from the la peep area as we develop watercraft safety in that area, the la peep area passed to that area that I'm speaking about, that possibly that go to IDL for a marking of no-wake zone.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then one other thing about the accessible ramp. When I was there, I watched several kiddos dumping gravel onto the ramp, and there was a bike that was chained and locked to the ramp, blocking the access to the ramp, and there was algae buildup on the ramp itself and was very slick. And so I'm concerned that that is not being monitored quite like it should be, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. With respect to staff, because I love them.
Larry, are you here to testify on CDBG grants? Okay, so I'll, that needs to be on the other sign-up sheet. Emily Boyd? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Excuse me. Emily Boyd, Director of the Downtown Association. I wanted to thank you all for considering the pilot project this evening to have beer and wine at the farmer's market. We have had a group of people working on this project. We brought this forward with a lot of research. As you all know, the Downtown Association hosts a lot of family-friendly events, and it's our intent to maintain that character of downtown. We've worked with staff and council member Wood and Gookin on this proposal, and we would love to see the opportunity to bring forward the pilot program. We've researched similar concepts out of Moscow, Idaho Falls, and Boise, who are all national main streets as well, and it has been a successful program for them. And so our intent is to take some of those similar methods and implement them into Coeur d'Alene and still maintain our family-friendly nature of Coeur d'Alene and not put extra burden on the staff. So we have a plan moving forward. We'd appreciate your consideration in allowing us to pilot it and report back to you, and we don't know how it will go either, so it's a trial, and we want to work with you on that. So thank you for your consideration.
You? Okay, that ends those wishing to make public comments. Announcements from city council. Woody?
Oh, I have something. I hear the mayor's leaving. So here we go.
We have this little, another plaque for the wall for your bedroom, maybe? I don't know.
That might be a bit threatening.
Where do you put these things? But anyway, this is from us, you know.
Oh, thank you very much.
Three dollars in, so enjoy it. All right. We appreciate all you've done for us and leadership and all those good things, you know, so.
Thank you.
Enjoy that, and you can hammer anytime you want.
All right.
Is that the gavel? Is that, so you don't have a gavel here?
Yeah, that's a good--
We took it away, I think.
There it is.
Okay. I have a couple of announcements. I've already made this speech once, so I'll keep it short, but I do, this is my last meeting, and I just wish to thank the greater community for the opportunity to work with you and serve you. It's, if you had ever told me that I might serve as mayor of Coeur d'Alene, I would have laughed, but it's been a wonderful adventure, particularly the first few months. It was a real adventure, but it's, I will hold it dear. I have a great love for this community, for the citizens in this community, for the staff that work so diligently for the people of this community, and so thank you for allowing me to serve. I appreciate it very much. I have an appointment of Kevin Jester to the Ignite Coeur d'Alene Board, seeking your confirmation on that.
So moved. Second?
Okay, we have a motion second to appoint Kevin Jester to the Ignite CDA Board. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I have another nomination for appointment to fill council member seat four effective September 1, 2024. And at the behest of the mayor to assume the duties September 1, I am nominating Kenny Gabriel to that position.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to appoint Kenny Gabriel to the position of council member effective September 1, 2024.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. And I am going to guess that there'll be a bit of discussion on this. Does the mover wish to open that discussion?
I do. I have a couple of questions for Randy. Randy, first, I appreciate your white paper. It's been mentioned several times tonight. And this afternoon, I had a couple of questions for you that I'll ask here, so everybody can have the knowledge. In the case of a tie, can you walk us through the process and your recommendation and what happens?
The statutes are predictably vague. Idaho Code, Section 50-602 is the general statute involving the mayor's duties and responsibilities. It says that he has a vote only when the council is equally divided. Then you get into the statutes involved, or the statute involved in the replacing of a council member, and the process is very bare bones. It says that the mayor shall appoint or nominate someone to fill a seat, and that council then votes to either confirm or reject the nominee. There's not much more to the statute than that, but my opinion had been, has been, that because it says that council must affirm or reject, that the mayor does not have an opportunity to, to vote on or break a tie because he is not a member of council. But as I told you, it is not entirely clear. I cannot definitively say that a mayor cannot vote to break such a tie.
Yes?
If I may have a follow-up question. So if he was to choose to break a tie, does that put us in legal jeopardy?
For the last 40 years, I've told everybody I know that all you have to do is pay the fee to file a lawsuit. So can the city be sued? Yes. Is such a suit likely to succeed? In my opinion, no, because courts grant great deference to bodies like a city council to do its own, do its thing, do its, make its own procedural rules and so forth. And unless the statute is clear, I don't think that a court is going to try to second guess.
Further discussion? Dan?
Well, just last night, actually, not as surprised as some, but I was watching the Democratic National Convention, and knowing this was coming up, knowing some of, you know, what's going to go on and everything, I really tuned in when the president of the United Auto Workers talked about, you know, the unions and all of that, and, you know, Kenny Gabriel, I mean, I, I liked, a great, great chief, and it's got nothing to do with, with him, but the process, and some might say, oh, forget that, you know, it's either, you know, forget that. But hearing that speech last night, it just struck me that I can't imagine the union, union guys in something, because you have very laid-out procedures and steps, actually, just like firemen, I mean, going through that. And if you said, you know, we're in this kind of a thing where we want to kind of, you know, take a shortcut because times of the essence, it'd be no. So I'm going to vote no because of, you know, I want to honor the process irregardless of, of who may be in that, although if it came through the other way, I'd likely support Kenny, but there might be other good ones, too. So that's my thought.
Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, this has been quite an ordeal, because I, too, like Kenny very much. He's a proven leader. There's no question about that. The question in my mind is, when we're elected to serve the public, do we do our best to include the public in the process? Now, by statute, when Woody, Woody's not yet the mayor, but the mayor does not have to, have to include the public. He has the ability to bring forward a nomination, and we either agree or disagree. But when we agree, in my mind, that means we're also agreeing with the process that was used, and I can't identify a process with this. There hasn't been anything in writing to the public that if you would, if you're interested in a council position, you can submit your name to the city clerk. We're going to hold that open for two weeks, and we'll take your name and your number or your letter, and then we'll do some public interviews, which is what I'm accustomed to with the school board and the college board, where public interviews for vacancies. So I can't identify a process, and there has been a few people that have contacted me and said, well, I'm interested in applying for this. And I've had to say, well, I, I don't know how you can do that. I don't. And so on their own, I think a couple of them have submitted a letter of interest, maybe perhaps to Woody, I'm not sure. I don't know who all has applied or how they've applied, and so it's a little, it's just messy to me. It's not public, it's not transparent. I, again, I don't want to talk about the person, because Kenny Gabriel is a proven leader. I want to talk about the process, and if he were to go through a process with everyone else, my guess is he would shine. So I've struggled with this. You know, I've been an elected official for 24 years straight, and what I've learned is the public likes to be involved, especially when it's an elected position. They very much want to at least view some sort of public process and interview process. So I also want to say that even though we are seeing things differently, some on the council, we're seeing things different, that's pretty obvious, I don't for one minute question the integrity of any member of this council or their service to this community. We're just simply disagreeing on process. There's no, there's no damage that's been permanently done on our relationship. Now, everyone knows I served on the NIC Board, and if you want to see the Real Housewives of Beverly Hills, just go back and watch some of those old NIC Board meetings. So that's not what's going on here. We're just simply disagreeing on a process and certainly not a person.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, this is about transparency, and it's about a process. And I supported Woody because I called him up and I said, you're going to have an open and transparent process, and that's why he got my vote. I don't think the mayor has the authority to vote on this. I have a sneaking suspicion he will. But I don't think he has the authority, because appointments are made with the approval of council, and the mayor is not on the council. The mayor runs the meetings. Council has the authority, like the, like the United States Senate, to approve an appointment. And if he votes, then why have a council? If he's going to make an appointment and it's controversial, it's the same as us not being here at all. There's a precedent. There's a legal case that was brought against the school district, and I know it's under a different title, but it is a legal precedent. Council McEvers is going to be voting on his own replacement, which means that seat isn't vacant. This was a summary judgment. Didn't go to court. Guy didn't have to think about it. It was a summary judgment. Why was it a summary judgment? Because if you have an illegal appointment, then everything the council does with that illegal appointment has to be undone. And I really wish our attorney would explain that that's what we're exposing ourselves to with this process, because an attorney has to tell-- Because an attorney has to tell you everything that's going to happen, not just take sides because you represent the whole council. And I think there's side-taking taking place here. I think the skids are greased. I think it's ready to go. It's a done deal. And you know what? I fight those bastards on the KCRCC for the same damn reason. I don't like backroom deals. And I have a feeling that's exactly what's happening right here, right now. It has nothing to do with the nominee. It has everything to do with a process and people talking behind closed doors. And we'll see how right I am in just a few seconds.
Kiki?
Okay. Councilmember Gukin, I get most of your points. I don't know about your legal expertise and your background of that. So I, it, it stirs enough, you know, questions in my mind. So I do want our legal to weigh in on some of these things again. And I, and I would just share also, Councilmember Wood, you're not wrong. Your experience is vast. You're not wrong in what you want in a process. But I'm just going to share a couple of other points of view. One is, we, we just went through a process where we appointed our mayor's seat. We had no, we had no public input. We had no transparency. We had no call for, for, for any applications or, or, or anything in the process of appointing the mayor's seat. And there was, there was one-on-one conversations that went on. And, and there was no letters to the editor. There was no, no conversation about that. So from my view, I have to look at that and say, what, what's the, what is the entire angst that's happening right now when it didn't happen a month ago? And there's also the point that the public elected us to do the work of the city. And the statute, as we've decided, could be interpreted one way or another, but there is no process that is defined. And you have brought forward some good points that you are concerned with the process, not the person. So what you're saying is, is that you have in your mind a process whereby your questions or someone else's, who knows what questions would be interviewed and how that would occur. And, and you're saying that, you know, that's what the public wants. And maybe that's true, but I don't know that we can know what the entire public wants. I think a good segment of the public wants us to do our job and do what the statute said, which is the mayor will appoint or nominate and the council will confirm or not. It doesn't speak to anything beyond that. So I'm, I'm just saying that there's, you know, we've talked about wanting a united council. And so I, I feel like we can disagree on whether we should raise parking fees or whether we should, you know, deal with a, a new park. We can disagree and debate all that. But I feel like this is a time when we have a fourteen-month seat to fill. We have a lot of work to do for the city. Big things ahead of us. We have already heard in the newspaper, our new mayor wants someone who can hit the ground running. I don't know who wrote letters of interest, but I would think if, if we're going out seeking people who are so unengaged with their community that they don't realize that a mayor resigned, that a council member was appointed and that there's an upcoming seat, and they, they didn't have the, the foresight to contact anyone to say, how do I, how do I apply for this? I assume in good faith that our mayor, if he had applications, which apparently there are people who have applied, have reviewed those people or wouldn't come forward with a nomination with somebody who wasn't the most qualified out of that group. So I just think there are, you know, multiple views on how this will work. I, I wanted to share those because I think it may be opposite with some people on this couple over here that have some really strong feelings. But I do think we were elected to do the right, the work of the people. And I think that filling an interim spot is part of the work of the people. We just appointed a guy, Kevin Jester, to the Ignite Board. The Ignite Board oversees a vast amount of taxpayer dollars and spends it. And we had no, we had no question about the process. And in fact, some council members may have not even looked at the data sheet. So I, I said may. So I'm just suggesting that when we have this kind of angst over one thing that could go either way, I, I think we can, we can calm it back down and say, you know, what's, what's the best thing to do for our city?
Dan? This is Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Kiki, thank you. Regarding the mayor's seat, no one was interested outside of council. And so we put our ears to the ground and no one really approached anyone, as far as I know, aside from council. So that's why that was different. I think what you're arguing, and I can be wrong, is expediency over transparency. And I would always side on transparency over expediency. I'd also like to point out that Mr. Jester's name was listed on the agenda where the appointment for council, the name was blank, which again leads me to believe, why weren't we being transparent?
Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Kiki, you make some good points about what the statute says and what our role is. But what I would say to that is, there is nothing that precludes the mayor from being collaborative with council and with the community. Yet, they have the ability to bring forward a name and we can vote on it, but there isn't anything prevents a process that involves the public more. And I, I just, you know, the, the urban renewal position is not elected. That's not the same, it's not apples and oranges. And so I guess I, I know how I'm just going to say my piece and vote how I vote and how it turns out, it turns out. But I know that the majority of people I speak to want the public involved. And then I guess the other consideration is, we don't know who applied. We have no idea who may want to apply. I don't think there's any women that maybe have been talked to. And so without knowing, what about, I don't even know how many people. I know nothing about whatever process was put in place to bring forward a name. So to me, it's just not the best thing that we could do for the public. But again, I will vote and, and honor whatever the council decides.
Dan?
Well, I would just say that if the media quotes me on one thing tonight, you can see that this, this part of the code is kind of a mess. There's a gap. We can, you know, talking about, well, it was a clear process here and here. So, I mean, the one takeaway apart from that, and I hope our legislators are listening, you know, if you want an easy slam dunk, feel-good measure, fix this. So, thanks.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk take the roll, please?
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
English?
No.
Wood?
No.
Gukin?
No.
Okay. Leaves it up to the mayor. And I want to share a few thoughts. The first one that I would share is regarding process. Certainly, the council has the right to propose a process for the selection of any nominee put before them. But they don't have the right to force that upon the mayor. The code's very clear that the mayor nominates and the council either confirms or chooses not to confirm the nomination or the appointment. They, there really is nothing more to the process than that. It's that simple. But I also have a grave concern tonight that we're talking about filling a seat with, the proposed individual is a dang good individual. He's proven himself to the community for a long time. But I think it's a very poor way to put somebody into a seat where you've got three people voting regardless of whether they're voting against a process that they proposed and not the person, the actual motion is for a person. I'm not going to leave my last meeting forcing somebody to jump into a position where half the council, at this point, has voted against the motion to put him in there. So, and there is some real question about whether the mayor actually has the right to vote. And for that reason, I will not vote. I will abstain from voting. The motion to put a, put Kenny Gabriel into this position, because it's a tie, it fails. And we'll move on now to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of the consent calendar, including Resolution two four oh six three.
Second.
Motion is second. Will the clerk take the roll, please?
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gukin?
Yeah.
Evans?
Yes.
Okay, we have a change order at the wastewater solids building. I'm interested in this since it's a pretty healthy change order.
Mr. Mayor and council? Okay. We got help? Well, while we're figuring this out, Mr. Mayor, wastewater department took it upon ourselves today to bestow you a gift because we couldn't make it to your going-away party. We felt really bad about that, but we were going through interview process and we didn't want to stand up our potential candidates that are being employed. So we would like to give you a parting gift from the wastewater department. Whether or not you would like to hang this up on your wall of plaques or not is entirely up to you, but our, our favorite is the pee emoji. The pee emoji reduces stress because you can squeeze it and what have you. But not to be undone, we also have number two emoji. So we have a poop emoji and a pee emoji. And what better way to say happy trails than to give, part you with something that can remind you of us?
Well, I can't think of a better gift, Mike.
That's awesome.
So, thank you, Renata, for bringing this back up. Yes, now on to what we're here for tonight. Thank you, first of all, for hearing the wastewater department's request for council to approve change order number two.
Number two?
This is our new mascot, too. If it's not from your body, keep it out of the potty. These are stickers that we're giving out to the children. And I'm sure there's a lot of parents out there that aren't too particularly pleased with us right now. But anyways, little history, you may have noticed, we've been doing a little construction. And that construction's on the south side of the treatment plant, and it is our solids building improvement project. This is a planned multi-year project where we were replacing one of our dewatering equipment. It was obsolete. It didn't perform anymore, so we went ahead and replaced it with a newer, larger centrifuge unit. This will address our redundancy issues out there by having two of these. We, if one breaks down, we can still continue to process, dewater our biosolids. This will also increase our sludge dewatering capacity in the building. This building that you see right here on the left-hand side is architect's rendering of what is going to be constructed out there. On the right is how the building dewatering facility presently is. And as you can see, it's open. Our hope is to help reduce some of the odors on that side of treatment plant by enclosing the entire facility. Now, a while back, we had a tertiary membrane project that we came to council with a fairly substantial change order. At the end of that council meeting, we explained to council that next project, we will bring change orders as they progress during construction. So this report represents our second change order before council. This, this is the other slide that I meant to show you here. This is where we're at right now with the building on the right-hand side. So change order number two comprises of five change proposal requests and seven work change directives. Here on this slide are the seven, I'm sorry, the five change proposal requests. That total fifty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and two cents. The other seven are work change directives. And as you can see, work change directive number two is a rerouting of the storm drain outfall. And it, it's a little over a million dollars. This brings this total to a million, a little over a million dollars. So when we combine the two, we come up with change order number two. This is presented before council as a decision point tonight. And it goes for one million, one hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. The contractor, Apollo, has started this project on July thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. He had a three-hundred-and-thirty-day contract. That was the window to complete the project. That would have expired on June twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four. Some of the components, for some reason or another, have taken extremely long to come in. One of them is a panel that controls all the equipment on that side of the treatment plant, and it's taken up to seventy-two weeks to take delivery. We did call other manufacturers out there and we were not able to gain much more than two weeks on that timeframe. So the contractor has asked for a time extension until May thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. This was based on the delivery date of February twenty twenty-five and an installation date for the contractor to install all the equipment. This takes us out to late spring twenty twenty-five. So as shown on this slide, we budgeted six-point-four million, a little over six-point-four million dollars. And with this change order, we're coming in at six-point, almost nine million dollars. Now, the wastewater department does have funds. We, we budget a capital reserve every year in the event that we have projects that present themselves. This is how we pay for some of our projects. Some of you may recall that during the tertiary membrane field project, we ordered a gantry crane so we could actually maintain those membranes. Those membranes were very costly and it would be much, much cheaper to maintain them in-house rather than contract out with a contractor to come in, pull them out and clean them. So this is how, this, this account is set up for these particular reasons. We presently have a million dollars in that account that we budgeted for this fiscal year. So we do have money to pay for this out of that reserve account. So why was change, work change directive number two so expensive? Well, we had to relocate the storm drain outfall pipe that's out there. That was installed in nineteen thirty-seven. Nothing's been done with it except we've used it since nineteen thirty-seven. It was used for both sanitary sewer and storm sewer. It is a thirty-six-inch concrete pipe, concrete cracks, but the pipe is in good condition. It's the joints between the pipe segments that are leaking. The pipe is located lower than the river. So when the river is flowing at summer pool elevation, that pipe is completely full. That water leaks out of all of these deteriorated joints and cracks. And so what we did is we relocated that storm drain further away from the building. We patched up all the joints that we exposed. And this way, this particular segment of pipe won't have to be replaced at a later date. And it also provides us with a peace of mind that we're no longer leaking water in that segment where it's going to undermine a building. Imagine quicksand. If you put a solid item in quicksand, it'll sink. Well, the same thing will happen here. That ground was so saturated that nothing was stable out there. And so this is why this project, this change order in particular, cost as much as it did. So before you tonight is a decision, decision point that should council approve change order number two and grant the contractor an extension on the time. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Question? Questions. Woody.
Couple, Mike, I know how cheap you are. You just work these guys to death, right? You hate this stuff, don't you? So, when you get into a million-dollar change order, is it something that just wasn't anticipated? Seems like you guys know about that pipe that goes into the river and stuff.
Yes, and there's a lot of unforeseen conditions. We knew about the pipe. We didn't know about it leaking as badly as it did. There was no way that, we tried to TV the pipe as we do our sewer lines, but when it's underwater like that, the resolution, you can't tell if there's cracks in the pipe or not. So, there are always going to be unforeseen conditions whenever you start digging out there.
And you mentioned stormwater. I know we've been trying to unplug stormwater from the sewer treatment plant, so it wasn't going to you for many years. The stormwater and the outflow, the outflow is what's left when you guys get done, is that correct?
Yes, we call that the outfall.
Outfall.
And that, yes, that's further, the outfall was replaced, I believe, in the 80s, early 80s, and it's actually further downstream. This is a stormwater outfall where there's a triplex pump station, a large pump station with three pumps in it that pumps into a three-foot diameter pipe. It takes a significant amount of stormwater.
Okay, still.
Still, to this day.
But doesn't go through the system?
Does not, it's not being treated, no.
Okay.
Not, I'm sorry, it's not being treated at the wastewater treatment facility.
Which we used to do.
I want to get that clear.
Okay.
There is treatment of it.
Okay. So, these things just weren't in the picture when whoever draw the plans go up? Seems like when we've worked on the sewer treatment plant over the years when we upgraded, we dug up the thing and found all this stuff, and we were constantly changing things, right? Pipes and electric, and this is kind of the last hurrah, right, on the south end?
On the south end, yes.
Because we haven't worked the south end, right?
We'll be working on the north end next.
Okay. All right. Thank you, appreciate it.
Seeing no further questions, thank you, Mike. Will the clerk take the, well, look for a motion first here.
I would move to approve Resolution 2406-4, approval of change order number two to the solids building improvement projects and hope we won't sue you again.
Well, I'll bring gifts next time.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk take the roll, please?
McEvers.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item up for discussion is presented by Renata McLeod, our municipal services
director regarding alcohol at the market.
Okay, well, I am here to present to you a proposal and a request from the downtown association, and it is related to open containers in the farmer's market area. So, I presented this to general services, public works already, but I'll do a brief overview. I know you got the information in your staff report, that way the people at home watching can understand what we're talking about here today. So, the city of Corder Lane has several sections that regulate alcohol consumption in the city limits, and that would include beer and wine. I'll just use the term alcohol to cover it all. Specifically regarding open containers, we have several exemptions in Idaho, in our municipal code, chapter 5.08160 regarding open containers. We have about 10 exemptions listed in code, three of which are already sort of covered under Idaho code, the right to have open containers in your private residence. We had one exemption in there for onsite during alcohol beverage, or I'm sorry, alcohol-related sales, sorry, I'll get there tonight. And then, one for a certified laboratory that was actually on city-owned property at the Harbor Center facility when we leased that out through ISP, which would have been covered under law enforcement purposes as well. So, if we're going to amend this code, we could probably remove three of those. So, we end up with about seven exemptions that have to do with open containers in public spaces. We've allowed an open container exemption for tasters of one ounce of wine at the farmer's market or street fairs already when they're covered under a special event permit. That's when the streets are closed or sidewalks are already closed. But again, that was limited. We have the exemption to allow the pedal bike to have alcohol onboard, and we have an exemption that allows fundraising here in the library building for the library foundation to have wine sales here. And then, we have a couple exemptions in the park code that allow alcohol sales with a permit at the Riverstone Park gazebo, amphitheater, Jewett House, City Park, and McEwen Park. We have a history here in Corder Lane that we have not allowed open container throughout the entire city. Some cities have open container, you're allowed to walk down sidewalks, Butte, Montana, we've been there a few times, you know, and in parks. I think Post Falls has some parks that has open containers allowed throughout the entire park. The downtown association has made this request, staff has met with them several times, a couple council members have been involved in that discussion, and it's gotten to a point where it's time for council to have this open discussion and let staff know which direction you want to go. There's differing opinions on the safety and the effects that this may have in our community, but I'll outline a little bit of the area we're talking about here specifically for this request is the area here on Fifth Street between Lakeside and Front Avenue. So, you know, on Wednesday nights is the downtown farmer's market. Sherman Avenue does stay open to vehicular traffic. So, the proposal from the downtown association talked about fencing the area here on Fifth Street between Lakeside and Sherman and having some sort of security or gated entrance there to make sure that the alcohol does not flow into Sherman Avenue. And then, again, that same setup here, south of Sherman Avenue to Front Avenue. In our discussions with them and the police department, there were several guidance and conditions we would like included in that for the security of making sure nobody under 21 is drinking and that alcohol stays in those permitted areas if we move forward with this pilot project. So, the police department had provided some original information, you know, at first blush, this sounds like a reasonable request, but the concern really is that this is the beginning of the request for more and more special events to have open container, and they are already having major alcohol-related crimes in the area, and they don't have adequate staffing for summer months as it is. So, those are some of their concerns. And then, they've updated some of their information on some of the alcohol citations and warnings, and I'd like to bring Chief White up at this point so he can provide some of that specific information to you.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. We pulled statistics after we've submitted the initial information to Renata with regards to this proposal. And I think I need to say first and foremost that I do think this is an idea that's worthwhile. However, as Renata pointed out, we are already overtaxed in the summer months. We are not adequately staffed. And our city does have a bit of an alcohol issue. So far, since January 1st of this year, our officers have issued 321 warnings with regards to alcohol offenses, and we've issued 241 total citations for a variety of alcohol offenses. Twenty-six of those resulted in arrests. And keep in mind that I would say the overwhelming majority of those are all in the downtown area. Very few of these take place, you know, in the northern part of the city and that sort of thing. So, this is already, we already have an enormous problem with alcohol in our area, and I just want to make sure the council was aware of the gravity and I think the scope of the issue we're dealing with. Moreover, you know, North Idaho has always had a bit of a problem with drinking and driving, and so, I thought I'd bring a couple of stats relating to that as well. Our average blood alcohol content for our DUI arrests is .15. So, everyone's aware, the national average for fatal alcohol-related collisions is .16. So, we're just slightly under that. We're all frankly a little bit shocked that we don't have more fatal alcohol-related collisions in our city. Our high, just because this is always fun to hear, the high blood alcohol content for this year, this year's winter, had a blood alcohol content of .384.
Wow.
So, anything above .3 is the paramedics in the back of the room will tell you is alcohol poisoning. Usually, someone with a .384 is comatose. But this one person wasn't. They were involved in a collision and an upside-down and that sort of thing, so operating a motor vehicle. All this to tell you that we do have quite a problem with alcohol in our city. Some people would say, well, the majority of that happens late at night, you know, after 10:00 PM or whatever. I would tell you, yes, a lot of the alcohol-related issues we have do occur, say, after 9:00 PM at night. I would also tell you that the numbers that I gave you are not only after 9:00 PM at night. Every single day that the guys are, guys and gals downtown on their bikes and foot patrol and that sort of thing, they're giving warnings and citations in the middle of the day. 10:00 in the morning last week, I heard one on my way into City Hall, on my way to Mayor Hammond's retirement thing this afternoon, there was two that had already taken place before 1:00. So, this is an all-day issue. With that, I'll stand for any questions before I turn it back over to Renata.
Amy.
Chief, I have a question. You have tools in your tool belt for maybe not open container if we decide to move forward with the pilot, but for public intoxication or disorderly conduct if an individual was to get out of control, you still have additional tools to be able to handle the situation with, outside of just the open container?
We do. The problem is just the scope and the number of people that we're already dealing with adding to that problem is problematic for us. We simply just don't have the bodies in the summer months to adequately police downtown, at least not to the level that I'm comfortable with.
Okay, thank you.
Woody.
Christie. A couple things. So, do you relate to some of the things where we allow it, all the little, the parks and these different places where we allow it? Do you see any more, has that become an issue or is that just part of the whole numbers that you were giving us?
The majority of the issues we see are in the parks and up and down Sherman, and it's really all over downtown. I would tell you, 4th of July, even with all the signage that we put out, the reader boards and everything else, we still give a huge number of warnings and citations on that date and around Independence Point and all the parking lots and up and down Sherman, especially down in City Park. We, I'm not sure if I answered your question, but it's a.
I guess I was thinking more about the venues that we have allowed them to. They have security, does that change?
It does to a degree. So, if it's a permitted event, obviously, it's not as big of an issue. If we already have a permitted event downtown or in one of the parks, then obviously, there's nothing illegal about that, and so, none of these statistics that I gave you would apply to those things, with the exception of the people who ignore the rules and walk outside the barricades with their drinks or something like that. The bars downtown this summer in particular have done a fantastic job working with us and kind of policing themselves and keeping people, keeping the, keeping it down to a dull roar, and frankly, when things do get out of control, calling us very early, and so, we have the opportunity to intervene sometimes without taking someone to jail or issuing a citation.
Nice, thank you.
Christie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to meet with Emily Boyd and Adam Graves from the downtown association twice, and Councilmember, you can join. So, we were invited by staff to sit on these discussions and wanting, they wanted to bring this proposal forward. And I will say that I do believe the downtown business association is really trying to do something kind of fun and lighthearted, and so, their motivation I completely understand, and I think they believe that the kind of people that will go to the farmer's market are not going to be sloshed, you know, two hours later on Sherman. But I want to tell you that, you know, a lot of times when we vote on things here, we do it with our life experience. So, I did serve as a police officer for 26 years here. I did work downtown, more and more hours than I could ever count, and I didn't just respond to some minor little incidents where people were maybe in a little fistfight or something, or something that could be quickly resolved by police. I responded to people who died, and so did our fire department. They have, they, we're not just talking about police here, our fire department has to respond as EMTs. And there were three off the top of my head that I remember vividly where a fight got out of control and the person didn't survive. And so, what I'm worried about is not a farmer's market where someone's going to have a couple of glasses of wine and maybe go home. What I'm worried about is what we open the door to, to more and more special events. We're hearing from our chief, all of the incidents that have already occurred, they're already taxed as it is. I know this because I lived it, and alcohol doesn't always improve an event, it just doesn't. Now, I will say that anyone could walk 50 yards outside of the farmer's market to any bar on Sherman and get anything they want, and so, I don't know that it's going to, in my opinion, it's not going to enhance the farmer's market just by having the ability to have some beer and wine. There's also plenty of restaurants up and down Sherman that allow for you to sit outside and have that experience. So, for me, I'm just not able to get excited about this because of what I think it will bring and because I remember all those critical incidents that I responded to. I'm not going to be able to support it as much as I like Emily and Adam.
Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if my question's going to be for the chief as much as it's going to be for Renata and possibly Emily, because there are concerns, but you know, drinking is fun. We want to make sure that it stays fun. Is there any intention to charge more for those vendors who are going to be distributing alcohol?
So, for the city of Corder Lane, when we do a special event or street closure permit, we have a set fee based on the number of streets closed and et cetera, et cetera. If there are additional safety plans that need to be implemented, then that would be on the downtown association's dime, and they would set the fee for any vendors they have in any of their street fair events or anything like that. So, Emily Boyd is here, if you'd like her to come forward.
Well, I'm just, my thinking, Renata, is the same that I've been saying about all our special events, is that if this, if something incurs an extra cost to our public safety, to our police and fire, that that should be compensated and that if this is going to be an issue, then we should consider charging more for an event if it's going to have this level of fun. The other question, and this is probably for Emily. So, I assume that you're going to be training whoever is going to be distributing the beer to properly ID drinkers and to watch out for the biggest problem we have downtown, which is over serving?
Yes, so, the intent would be to have vendors who do this on a regular basis, like maybe a downtown brewery or wine bar, they would be the ones that are serving the alcohol, and then, we would work with a security company that the city approves of to help enforce that as well.
Okay, and are you going to be limiting the number of servings that you give individuals?
We certainly can consider that. Again, this is kind of just the pilot test of it and seeing what works, and if limiting the amount is something that we want to add into the pilot, we can certainly try that out.
I understand the chief's concern, I understand Councilmember Wood's concern, and I think one of the biggest problems we have, and I've seen this downtown, I mean, I went when it was crazy, I spent a night downtown and it was not fun, but yeah, it's, these guys are obviously drunk, they tighten it up, they go, they order a drink, they shouldn't be given a drink, and they're the problems. And I don't think anyone going to the farmer's market, to go to the farmer's market and have a beer or wine would be the problem. It would be one of these other people the chief is talking about who comes in there, tightens up, gets a beer, and that's really their fifth beer of the day, and I don't want you to have that problem. So, I just want to make sure these are things you're thinking about.
Yeah, thank you. If I might add, for some of our other events that do involve alcohol, the security companies are at our check-in and entries to kind of test the waters. If someone is already walking into the event and they look like they've been having a fun time already, then we're not going to sell them a ticket at the discretion of either us or the security.
Sounds wise, thank you.
Kiki.
I just had a couple things. One is, I think our prosecutors felt that this could be, I think they call it a single exception, and other crap, it isn't going to set a precedent for having to approve other requests. We can do that if that comes forward. But more so on the fact that this is a pilot process, pilot program. What are the monitoring milestones that you're going to determine whether this is a success or a failure? Are, and obviously, you're going to be working with police on, hey, we're getting way too many calls from the farmer's market, but how long is the pilot process and what are some of the measuring tools you plan on using to determine its success or failure?
Well, we'll speak from two different angles, I guess. From the city's side, obviously if it's going to cost us additional services, if there's additional trash, if there's, you know, puking or, you know, those kind of things that occur after excessive amount of drinking, I mean, we'll know that fairly quick from law enforcement experience. So we'll be kind of measuring ours on how much law enforcement is seeing of additional issues in that area on that night, maybe. And we can work with Chief White on what he thinks those measurements could be as well. But I'll let Emily talk on the success of farmer's market.
Yeah. Great question. So I think also we'd like to know from the city departments what it's affecting them. And then also is it a benefit to the vendors? Is it extending people's shopping times, the whole experience of the event and just seeing if it increases the, the buzz of the event? The market has been very successful, this would just kind of be an icing on the cake for it. So gauging that, we do surveys with vendors to see how their sales are differ, different. And then we would also realistically like to start the pilot the rest of the summer, but we only have about eight markets left. And by the time we, if we receive your nod of approval to pilot this, we still need to order fencing and wristbands, cups, all the supplies that we have outlined in the project. So my guess is we'd maybe get three or four markets under our belt, trying this out, and then reconvene with city staff and see what the taste is.
For next year? So the pilot project might be the end of this year and into all of next year?
I think we could, if we're able to spin things around and get four markets under our belt, I think we could get a pretty good feel if this is going to be something that is a benefit or not. Okay, thank you.
You have a motion before you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to prepare a code amendment to allow for a pilot proposal to allow open containers within the downtown farmer's market area.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Further discussion? Dan?
Yes. You know, this came before the committee last week and, you know, again, it sounds reasonable and a pilot project and things, but then, you know, and I appreciate, you know, like at different times, like with the art walk and they've, you know, got some wine and the different things. But, but as I pondered it a bit, and especially with the, you know, public safety, you know, police and, and fire potentially stretched, and when I read in the staff report that, you know, it's the Downtown Association attention, intention to see how the pilot project goes and possibly request an exemption for all DTA-sponsored events in the future, I just, you know, again, I, I don't think you have to go near as far as 50 yards to find if somebody wants, you know, alcohol and they have, you know, some of the little tasting things now. So when I weigh everything, you know, I'm going to vote against this, not, because it's not a good group or good idea, but it's just, you know, I just think the potential drain on our resources isn't worth it, so.
Okay, well, clerk, take the roll, please.
English?
No.
Wood?
No.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, you need to set a public hearing date. Welcome, Katie.
Thank you. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I have our budget, resolution for the amended budget for current year to go over. You know, this, this has a large overall total for this budget amendment, however, nothing here should come as a surprise. We set our budget with the best information we have, and as the year goes on, decisions have to be made that have financial impacts. And a number of decisions with big-ticket price tags came up over the year. And just one thing to keep in mind, with an $11 million amendment to our current year budget, this does not mean that we are working with an additional $11 million in an ongoing sense. I just quickly went through the list, almost everything here is a one-time event, and so I'll jump right into it. I want to just give a high-level overview. As I mentioned, these are things that have come before council. So we'll talk both on the revenue side and the expenditures. Updates to our revenues, we're focusing on general fund changes. We have a couple of revenue line items that we can adjust. For example, our electricity franchise fees would be an increase, we're seeing of $100,000, $130,000. We come down to the larger line item, which is the 2.8 grant, and this is mainly our ARPA funds that are allocated in the current year for a couple of projects. Those funds were in fund balance, however, they're being pulled out as we recognize the revenues when they're used. Going back down to another big-ticket item is proceeds on a lease agreement and our ICRAP claim payment. We did receive more than this claim payment, but I am recognizing the revenue that will go against the expenditures that we can incur in the current year. There's some lead time on a number of those pieces of equipment, so we're looking, we're estimating about $750,000 of equipment that we can get before fiscal year-end.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could ask a question, Katie? What, what's the lease specifically?
I would defer to our city administrator for that.
The way that the financials work for the city is we lease the equipment and then we have to bring that in as the proceed. That makes it very confusing based on accounting principles for that cool equipment, and you just gave me the acknowledgement that you understand.
Okay, so this is street department wastewater, oh no, it'd be street department.
Street department.
Street department, okay, thank you so much.
All righty, and two other big-ticket items here are designated fund balance. So this, these are, this is a piece of fund balance that we have planned to use for one-time purchases, as well as an additional approval of overall fund balance of one point, almost $2 million here. Expenditures, this is a detail, department by department. I'll just highlight a couple of items here. You'll see quite a bit of separation payouts. These are related to staff who leave and they have unpaid, or I'm sorry, they have accrued vacation on the books, as well as those who retire, get paid out on sick leave, as well as certain groups have holiday pay that is paid once a year, that they would get a payout. When we look at our municipal services, we have two line items that are from ARPA funds that carried over because the purchases, the timing was not able to make it into the prior year. So those line items carried over. And looking back down as far as other highlights, we have a number of grants in the police department, so we wanted to make sure we were recognizing the expenditures that would go along with those grants. And we also have one-time budgetary events broken out for the police department, which would mainly be the expansion, as well as those costs related to the police department outbuilding fire.
Another question, Mr. Mayor. So I have another question.
Yeah.
Are some of those items positive and some of them negative? I'm, I'm having trouble, because it says like a grant, but then it looks like there's an item there that's a, that's an expense. Are these all, how does that work?
So all of these are expenditures, however, I did want to call out what the funding source for these are, just to, you know, hopefully clarify that we don't have another $11 million coming into the budget. Most of these are one-time or, one-time revenues that are covering these.
So the, the funds going to, going to fire, so constant staffing is 200K, which I think the chief told me that was coming. And that's coming out of general revenues, but then the 14,000 for the, the grant, that, that's just grant money? That didn't come out of the general fund?
Grant revenues are covering that, correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
So looking at our streets department, we did have an opportunity to, to overlay some roads this summer, so those were in fund balance from prior year. And we also had our remodel that's broken out as a one-time budgetary event for $1 million, and that is also from fund balance. This gives us, gives us an overall total for general fund of 8.78 million down here. And then we'll jump into our other funds. Impact fees had a couple of transfers, so again, this is the expenditure side, we had transfers out of impact fees to cover some financial decisions that were made throughout the fiscal year. Street capital projects, just showing there were some adjustments to what those funds were being used for, which net to zero. And wastewater is our next big-ticket item, the solids building improvement, as well as a couple of other capital items. Those are funded from the wastewater fund, which could be a mix of additional revenues, as well as fund balance that has grown over the years, as the capital projects in that fund can be quite expensive. And so there is a fund balance that comes into play certain years to, to pull some of these things off. Brand total, that's how we get to our 11.7 million dollar resolution that we're putting in front of you. So I will be happy to answer any questions.
Dan?
Well, I would just have a comment on this. As we go to this, I'm sure all of the other council members also read the alerts that we get from the governor's office. And a few days ago, we got one that, you know, in the property tax relief fund, you know, I think it's like a, you know, well, there's 74 million or something coming. Last year was a larger one. The bottom line of all of that, and I really appreciate it, a guy from the tax commission called me, actually just since I was coming into the mayor's event, and, but the bottom line is, even though that won't come to our budget in terms of the city of Coeur d'Alene taxpayers with whatever we do, I mean, the whole point of that is going to be some offsetting things where they will get more property tax relief from, you know, when it goes to the county. And then, as you probably noticed, the last year or two, you know, your county bill, then there's a, a line where they take skim sum off. And so, I mean, mine have been going down, I mean, Coeur d'Alene place with the assessed value going up, and, and school bonds are exempt, but still, we might in this, if you're in the Coeur d'Alene School District, there might be something. So I'm hoping by the time we have our final thing, even though, again, it's not directly to us, it'd be nice if, and he said, they're really working on getting us those numbers. Of course, they're reliant on the county assessor getting their stuff in on time, and just like we're waiting on all those other things from county assessor right at that time. But anyway, that's something that will be good to be aware as we're doing those final budget decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy, maybe you can help me out here, but isn't this what we would normally do at the end of September? I mean, it seems, it seems a little early. I always remember you being nervous, you're like, I hope I got these numbers right. And, I mean, could you just help me out here?
Yeah, we're just setting that particular public meeting so that we can have that and want to give you advance notice. And again, what, about 95% of these you have touched already, we're just squaring the books up. But again, thank you for recalling. We're forecasting what's going to happen through the remainder of September, which is always a comfortable feeling in the financial world.
Yeah, well, okay, if you're good with it, then I, I understand. It's just, it seems like this is always a last-minute thing. I know we're just setting a hearing today.
Your order.
So these numbers could theoretically change before the hearing.
Correct. They, they cannot go up, so they would need to fit within this resolution total. On the expenditure side, if there were unexpected revenues, those, you know, we can take those as a city.
No.
However, yes, we do not, we can't be above the overall expenditure appropriation. And so I'm, I'm very confident that we would end the year well within, with this resolution being added to the current year budget. There are savings in certain departments, however, you know, it's always good to ensure you're, you're following the law, but also look out for anything unexpected. And at this point, our main, our main expenditures are going to be salaries and benefits as a service organization. We only have, I think, four and a little bit more, four and a partial pay period left, and so that's pretty reasonable to estimate within a really close margin, so.
Okay, well, if I see at the farmer's market drinking, I'll know that there's a problem.
Would someone wish to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 24-065 approving the setting of a public hearing for September 17th, 2024, for amendments to the year 2324 financial plan.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Saying no further discussion, little court, take the roll, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Gookin?
Affirmative.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
The next item up for business deals with our CDBG grants, and there is a public hearing stated for this. I'm not sure, who to ask, whether it's Troy or you, Randy, but I'm kind of confused about which part of this we actually need the hearing, when I need to open and close the hearing on this.
It's the first one.
Yes, it is the public hearing on the approval of the community block, development block grant plan year substantial amendments to the annual action plan.
Welcome, Sherri.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here before you again tonight. This time, we're talking about our 2023 plan year that we're currently in and substantial amendments to our annual action plan. I'm going to skip through some of these. So when, when we're making a substantial amendment, CDBG regulations require if there are line item changes which total more than 20% of the budget, or there's projects that we want to fund that weren't included in the original annual action plan, that we, it would constitute a substantial amendment. And what that involves is we would need to open that up, the draft to the public, give them an opportunity to make comments on the changes that we're proposing. So our 23 amendments that we would like to have approved would be adding an annual goal of public facility rehabilitation. And then we would need to provide funding in the amount of $201,848. And we would therefore need to reduce our budget funding of affordable for sale and for rent housing goal from $158,064 to zero. And we would also need to reduce the funding for rental subsidies from $43,784 to zero. Those amendments would allow for us to make allocation of funds for public facility rehabilitation through our community opportunity grant program. Key terms for CDBG would be the low to moderate income, LMI folks. Activities have to meet a national objective. They have to be in our annual action plan and consolidated plan goals and be a HUD-approved activity. Some of the eligible activities are the same that we went over at the last meeting, that you can use the grant funds for acquisition of property, relocation and demolition, rehabilitation... you can use the grant funds for acquisition of property, relocation and demolition, rehabilitation of residential and non-residential structures, construction of public facilities and improvements, and public services. Our 2023 to 2027 consolidated planning goals are maintain and increase housing stock, public facility and infrastructure projects, public services, homelessness assistance, and economic development. We advertised this opportunity for the public hearing and to make comments on our annual action plan substantial amendments. And we received one, one comment from St. Vincent de Paul of some terminology that changed recently, so we'll make those updates to that draft plan. Our revised budget would be adding that $201,848 for community opportunity grants. And we spent $10,000 this year supporting Lake City Centers Mills on Wheels. We have $75,000 in our MRAP program, which still supports that housing goal. And then we would have the public facility improvements for $201,848. And then we're allowed to spend up to the 20% of the grant funds of $71,712 on administration of the program. And any questions about the amendments? And then we would open the public hearing for any comments on the amended plan.
Woody?
So, help me, I've been disoriented recently. We just did some CBDG last month? Is that the new year we were working on?
Correct. So at the last council meeting, we brought our proposed 2024 annual action plan that you approved. And this is making amendments to our 2023 annual action plan, which is the year that we're currently in, that ends September 30th of this year.
And I just, I probably should know this, but how come it's changed so much? How come we shut down a couple of operations and put it all in one? Was there something reason behind that?
Right, so last year, the community opportunity grant program was put out for proposals and the program received a, a pretty great proposal from a nonprofit that was kind of new to the area, that was proposing to build workforce housing. And so the ad hoc committee reviewed it, reviewed all of the proposals, but they had selected that one, which would have taken pretty much most of the grant dollars. That project fell through. The nonprofit was unable to secure land to build that project. It was 200 and, I think, 40-ish units they were proposing, but unfortunately, they couldn't bring that project to even the starting gate. So with that, we reopened those 2023 funds, the opportunity for those this summer, and went ahead and allowed organizations to submit for those dollars. So the applications that came in, this go around were for public facility improvements. We didn't receive any housing proposals.
Yeah, that doesn't happen very often, doesn't it?
It doesn't.
With that big a chunk.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ken?
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. I have three people signed up to testify. First one, all, all three have not expressed whether they are in favor, opposed, or neutral, but two of the three wish to speak. First one is Patty Wheeler. Do we have to, okay, swear these people in? Larry, would you stand up at the same time and we'll swear you both in?
Please raise your right hand and respond by saying I affirm. Do you solemnly swear nor affirm that this testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, thank you, Council and Mayor. My name is Patty Wheeler, and I'm the senior program director at Safe Passage. I think a few weeks ago, you had the privilege of hearing from our executive director about all the wonderful things that Safe Passage does for survivors of domestic and sexual violence in North Idaho. So I'm not going to repeat everything she said. First of all, I want to thank you for partially funding us, and this will take us over the, the mark that we need to be at to remodel our kitchen, so it's more accommodating for multiple people. We have a community living facility, so we need multiple people to cook at the same time and also keep the roof on. We've had to patch a few leaks this last couple winters, and I think we need to be done and just get the roof done. So thank you for that. I did want to take an opportunity to also talk about some of the housing programs that Safe Passage has been able to create and bring to, to your community. We are funded through Idaho Housing and Finance Association to do rapid rehousing projects, to do prevention, so help people pay their rent so they're staying in their homes, and help them relocate. We also get money through the Idaho Council on Domestic Violence, which pays for most of our supportive services for our shelter. And that's through crime victims funds that comes from the feds. We also recently received some Violence Against Women Act money in the amount of $600,000 to implement transitional housing in our community. And those grants are continuous, so I'll be able to house between six and eight families with that funding per year. So we're very excited about that. And that's money that Safe Passage has brought in to help the community with our affordable housing issue that we're all dealing with. So just wanted to share that part about you. And I guess I got three whole minutes left. I thought I only had three minutes. But any questions? I could just throw it to you.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to say thank you for the work you're doing in our community. It's greatly appreciated and not always immensely public because of the privacy of the individuals you work with. But I know my organization works closely, my organization outside the city with your organization, and I just want to say thank you.
Well, you're welcome. And thank you for your support.
Thank you for your testimony. Your dear almost signed up, but does not wish to testify, Larry Riley.
So Patty, I'd be happy to take a couple of your minutes, but I think I probably only need about five. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Godspeed to you, Mayor, in your travels. Thanks for all you've done for the community. So I'm going to fold my comments into the annual action plan and the community opportunity grant. The action plan's a good piece of work, by the way. It's comprehensive. It consists of 11,000 words. About 2,000 of those, or 17% of those pertain to St. Vinnie's. And so I stayed up at night to read it. And it really is a good piece of work. Well done, Hillary and Sheri. So most, most of what we do can be found on pages 23 through 25. In fact, page 27 describes how the Help Center became a reality back in '09. And the quote continues, "to assist a majority of people in need throughout the community." Councilmember Evans McEvers, you voted on it back then to make the Help Center a reality, so thank you. With that, the reality is this building was built in the 60s, the old public library. I look forward to a day, some, someday when St. Vinnie's might assume this building. But it's shown its age. But it sure looks good for being over 60 years old. And it's important to keep this building up and running for the community, because this is a community asset. And you have. Since then, thanks to members Gookin Wood, Miller, and English, you've continued the process. So nonprofits run on a very thin margin, right? They, they really should. We could never afford a lot of the CapEx investment into maintaining that facility. Otherwise, we would be taking away from services to the, the community. That's where you come through in big ways. Back in 2020, you helped replace our HVAC system, 188 grand out of $195,000 expense. Then COVID hit us in 2021, right? You helped us install Plexiglas sneeze seals, sneeze shields at the reception desk for 3,600 bucks. They're still up today and provide a barrier between the staff and some of our clients. Some of our clients aren't entirely cooperative, so it creates a nice barrier, and thank you for that. COVID wasn't going away, so you helped us replace old double doors and set up a really cool remote unlock system with intercom and cameras. These doors not only save energy, because we had cracks, gets cold in the winter, right? But it introduced safety measures. We can really clear our clients really, really well. That improvement costs the city 11 grand. Thank you for that. And let's just say it's hard to keep out, you know, some of the more aggressive clients, you know, that we try to serve. A lot of times, I'm the only guy around. You know, generally, we're, we're staffed with a lot of females. So the female staffers and the clients really appreciate that, that controlled access. So COVID was beginning to fade, and we learned through our friends at the Panhandle Health District that our old bathrooms were bacteria sanctuaries. The old mosaic tile might have been cool back in the day, but it turned pretty grody. I thought, Woody, you would understand that term from Southern California, grody. Bleach pine sole and Lysol can only do so much. So the city stepped up in a big way and helped to the tune of 188 grand. It was an investment that we split between two grant years. What a huge improvement we have. We now have very sanitary bathrooms. Think of dormitories in hospitals. The old library contained asbestos, so a fair share of the costs had to do with remediation. It is what it is. And with fresh ceiling tiles in the basement, you gave us new LED lighting, which is more cost effective, and it's really easy on the eyes. Small things make a huge difference. The bathrooms were brought up to ADA compliance. When I was here before you last, you may remember seeing a picture of me squeezed into kind of a stall. You really couldn't take care of business in that stall. The funny thing is, this old library had a, it didn't have a backflow. So the city stepped up and helped us with this, not like it was an option. But now we meet code. We got to keep Troy happy and Gary Nolan, right? So you helped us acquire the old library back in the day, and without your maintenance support, we'd have to close. I can tell you without any hesitation, the opportunity grants approved for the Help Center will keep us running this building for decades. It's a great location. We have one exception. We need a new roof, and that's what we have before the council today. We cover expenses on our own, too, yet every penny that goes into CapEx takes away from services. In fact, we repaved our parking lot, if I may, Mayor. Two minutes?
One.
One, okay, I'll talk fast. In fact, we repaved our parking lot five years ago, a major expense. Slipping hazard, crack, pools in the winter, it was a liability. So we've made improvements on our own nickel. It's an awesome location. It wouldn't exist without the city's help, so we appreciate the opportunity grant. Again, the, the action plan is excellent. Good job, Hillary and, and Sheri. There's an old saying that a well-defined problem is a problem half solved, and you guys have been really proactive in supporting us. In, on page 36, it describes how this city will continue to attend IHFA housing roundtables and our homeless coalition. In fact, your captain, Dave Hager, has been a regular attendee of that homeless coalition meeting. And I hope I'm not breaching any confidentiality, but Councilmember McEvers attended one of the homeless coalition meetings with Sheri. In fact, Sheri attends, continues to attend those meetings. And I have the good fortune of sitting next to Sheri and Woody. And, and it was really, it was really touching. You know, Woody is unrehearsed, and he leaned over and he says, man, this is heavy. That told me that he really, really understood. So, so Council, thanks for all your support over the years, back to '09 and most recently. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Okay.
Thank you.
Sheri, did you have anything else to add? Okay, I will then close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Just in case you didn't hear that, Dan. I gave it a nod of approval.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the community development block grant CDBG plan year 2023 substantial amendments to the annual action plan.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Is there further discussion? Sitting down, all those in favor respond with aye.
Aye.
Opposed with nay? Motion carries. Now we have a resolution approving the grants.
This is part two of what we're bringing to council tonight. We amended that annual action plan with the substantial amendments, and so we would like to seek approval of awarding grant funds to St. Vincent de Paul to re-roof the Help Center, $125,000. The project is going to cost about $180,000, so they have some other grant funds that they are going to use with this award. And then we would like to finish funding Safe Passage's re-roof and kitchen upgrade project for their safe shelter. So both of these projects meet HUD requirements. They are activities that can be assisted with grant funds, and we're seeking approval to go ahead and award those dollars to these two fine organizations.
Questions? Well, excellent job. Motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Resolution 24066 approving grant awards to agreements with St. Vincent de Paul and Safe Passage for funding through the 2023 community opportunity grants.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Is there further discussion on the motion? Yes, Woody?
I would just like to say that Larry, we're going to miss you. You know, we heard you're leaving, and you've done a great job, and hopefully you can find somebody to help them replace yourself. Thank you.
Will the clerk take the role, please?
Gookin.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
McEvers.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Well, one final motion here for you.
You could hold on.
Yeah, stay in session.
Yeah.
Keep you employed.
Let's tell jokes, huh? Stories about the old mayor.
I know some good Irish ones, too.
Tell some Jim Hammond stories.
Not appropriate for this group.
Well, probably need some beer, eh?
Yeah, yeah, sure, you betcha. Somebody going to make a motion here?
I don't think so.
No.
You got any final words?
Thank you very much, guys.
Got any final words?
It's been a great ride. Thank you for letting me be a part of it, and I certainly wish you the best. I'll be watching from afar.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Reluctant, reluctant motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed with nay? We are adjourned.
One last bang of the bangy thing.
One last.